Are we ready, Mike?
Hold on.
Red. Is there a motion to go back into regular session is four thirty three P M? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramirez and second by Commissioner Alba to go back into executive session at four thirty three P M. Into regular session. Into regular session. All those in favor say aye. On A, executive session relating to, uh, the lawsuit with Ann Bush.
Thinking about being item G, Judge.
We're on item G, Judge.
Okay, item D. So, but executive session, we have A, it's only for information purposes, what are you going to do, right?
Yes.
On consideration potential action to create the Bush election administrator for Las Alcatraz County, Texas border election related responsibility in the office of election administrator in Las Alcatraz County. What is to authorize here for him to proceed with, with, uh, seeking an operational budget, for the creation of such office, to include starting salary for that position?
Yes.
Please keep in mind that out of the eighty first judicial district, Las Alcatraz County is the only county that does not have an election administrator. So, Frail County, Wilson County, Addisville County, and Carr County all have election administrators. So, uh, so I would enter the motion to authorize, uh, Mr. Shaughnessy and, and Mr., uh, that of to come back to the operational budget, that way we get into the budget process, we'll have that information available. I mean, we can table it, but it'd still be good to authorize and get the information. We're not going to make an election on it, we're asking to give the budget information. I do that in form of a motion. Motion's been made and second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, H, consideration potential action authorizing McGinnis Lockridge to negotiate a touchdown regarding management agreement for Las Palmas nursing home facility for the potential termination and or transition of current management of Las Palmas, those negotiations for new management group facility.
We, I just want to report to the, the court that we have been engaged in discussions and negotiations, and this would just allow us to move forward with trying to finalize the management contract.
Been engaged in discussion and negotiation.
We ask you to table this item, if you can proceed. Negotiation.
That, that would be fine.
And to the members of the public, we didn't have a county-owned nursing home facility that is owned by the county, the county pays for administrative fees. We're concerned with some claims and we wanted clarification, but since it's a facility, we've been kind of heartbroken that didn't feel the facility was being kept up to what we expected to, so we're working with touchdown, they're working with us, I think people can see the side of the work that's being done. But the most important thing remains is the care of the patients at the facility, and we want to make sure that, that whatever actually we pay are only because that we're trying to improve the care and the well-being of the patients there. So, for time being, you know, I'd ask to table this item until when authorized. Mr. Shaughnessy, so that all can do with negotiations. Motion's been made and second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye. Now, number I, consideration potential action authorizing McGinnis Lockridge negotiating with Lawrence Myle consulting, uh, methods assist in the application. And the quick application is of a federal government has a program to, thanks to Department of Health. And these programs are for nursing homes to get better rates. What they require us is to make the hundred percent payment to the state, and then we get reimbursed, so that's been one of the conditions that I didn't understand with touchdown on the previous is I don't understand how that money's going back to us, but there's a deadline next week. So, Chantel from, uh, has been helping us understanding agreement, I think she explained, did a performance review. So, I want to make sure that, uh, that McGinnis Lockridge can continue to reach out to her. She did say that she hadn't been paid, it may be we need to get the invoices, but sometimes they, they'll be their voice, and if I forward it to you, and I don't have the internet, it's possible you didn't get it either. So, we do need to follow up on her invoice, make sure that she got paid for the last word. So, yeah. So, so they're going to reach out to her to see if she can get us to be a bachelor. But for the time being, we would need to authorize Mr. Shaughnessy to, uh, negotiate with the Lawrence Myle consulting. Yeah, we might get that off the other one. Motion's been made and second. On L. All those in favor say aye. Number J. Discussion potential action regarding appointments of county representatives to enter local commission responsible for managing Cristo Rey Cemetery. Now, for the people that don't know what's happening is the Cristo Rey Cemetery was, was born for the poor people of the city of Batula. And the county for many years has been managing the, uh, property. There's some part wishes of the land. The city claims that where the dump is is where the people that have been buried understand they own cemetery. Well, what we agreed to do was set up a, a receivership in district court where we have all parties involved. Get the district court to authorize, one, the correction of the title, two, designate people from the county, the city, and two churches of that large person to be the members. And this would allow, one, if any property disputes of people that have not remitted, or paid for lots of they've taken, take care of it, but it be under the district judge. It allows the group to be able to get all the records in place and start planning. The county has been working on the expansion, uh, of karate landowners or neighboring landowners to expand the facility. That way, this group would be kind of managed like the city of Batula, where it's, it's run by independent people that are not so much involved in, in politics. So, for now, in the agreement that we've made, I wanted to go ahead and nominate, uh, Commissioner Yara as, as the representative of the county. Said I'd consider at large, but I can provide information or invite somebody else. So, we, we, if we do it at large, then we still got to go to the city. I don't mind being at large to itself, but then after it's finally closed with the district judge, and I like to be off, and somebody else is going to be off, or, or, you know, you think you need my help, we're not going to make the appointment, you know, we can do the appointment now, but one more at large. City needs to vote in. See, you're in, we vote this way, but the at large, the city needs to vote that way too. But I'd rather it be a county at large than at city, because the counties have more stake in this than anything else. So, Commissioner, I mean, you want to, you want to be at large, I mean, I'll work with y'all, if you want to be at large, I mean, if, uh, Commissioner Ramirez. Yeah. It says precinct, it says precinct. We need one at large for us to pick mouth. A big mouth, huh?
You could possibly do the one motion for both appointments.
The motion would be to, uh, thank Commissioner Yara as the designated county representative and, and the county judge as, as the at-large, at-large, uh, appointee, they need approval from the city to do it. The motion's been made and second. This is, this is the motion, so I'll make the motion, and then, and then Commissioner Yara second it. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side. Number K, or item K, consideration potential action regarding settlement involving Cristo Rey Cemetery that live here and even saw this report. There's two things, there's settlement with Mr., uh, with Mr. Aguero. And I'm, I was going to ask to table the, uh, the settlement of the, uh, of, uh, with Mr. Aguero pending information on the city of Batula's commitment, identification and commitment to the money they received on initial lease bonus monies from the Chesapeake or Carizo, because we would like a commitment from the city of Batula that that money be earmarked to be used by the cemetery itself, and whether it's water improvements or property improvements or survey, but to be used for the facility. The motion's been made by Commissioner Yala. The motion's been made and second. All those in favor say aye. Number five. Discussion possible action to authorize Capex to submit application to exit department transportation infrastructure grant program and authorize county attorney to review contract and negotiate any necessary changes. And I told Jeff that he had a couple of things that he was supposed to be doing on his first round, providing to us, he said that's separate from this, but that contract is going to be approved while we have to do submission by April twenty seventh. So, he's a big working lady to make that submission. And then, uh, I believe they pinpointed seven million dollars in the first round to us, but I know that a laborer, a number of counties aren't going to apply, so they told us on the state level to apply for more, uh, because it's possible we're going to get more in our real payback. Because remember, they got to pay either ten percent or twenty percent, and with all this that's happening with the virus, some of these counties don't have any money whatsoever. So, it puts us in a very, very good position to get money, so. I would go ahead and say that's authorized Roy and Jeff to make that submission. We've already done the reports with Matt, I did see a letter from Bob Ast, and he's reaching out to these counties saying, hey, I'll do this for you, and I'll do the road reports. So, we're way ahead of it, of it, so that's the twenty seventh. So, they got to get all the reports, everything in two weeks, and they're not going to make it, but I want to make sure Roy said, I want to see it. I want to make sure you submit it, because we've already done it, we were planning this. We're here to hear, huh? And Roy and Mark. So, but before we submit, you know, you wanted to do projects, split them four ways, or do you want to pick two bigger projects? How do you all want to do it, you just want to just submit it in four ways? Seven million for now, or seven million, two million is? Huh? It's about two and a half million each. About two and a half million. Would match. You just want to divide it four ways? So, just let him tell that way he picks. That's why he picks four projects, you know, four projects. No, it's possible we're going to get more, but he just wants to know what projects to submit, because you know, you can just do one project and eat up all the money. Take care of your fridge, take care of your fridge, and maybe a little bit more, hopefully, for now. But any more money than is good for you.
All the people who, when they get any more.
All right. All right. So, I, I, I would do this, I'd make a motion authorizing, uh, to just not get back, submit the application, exit department transportation, you know, for four projects. Four projects. And the state also required that we submit as many projects as we could, to go limited to ten million, to, you know, shoot for the moon, because of the amount of counties that probably would not apply. So, that being said, you know, we need the authorization to authorize, uh, sort of submit the application for four different projects, equally for each precinct, or the touchdown presentation, which, which will, that will. And, and we'll let Christopher, uh, this negotiating process. Make the motion? Jack, Jack did it, huh? And second? None of it. There are all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side. So, we have number six, discussion possible action, pay bills and payroll, payables and payroll. We have a lot of action on reports. Eight for minutes, and then the Xerox knock back up. We want to, want us to do the, uh, the reports. Are you online? Get some more water. Want to sit here? So, if we're having the you two, are we, are we seeing John's interview? Is there a motion to approve the report? Motion's been made, second. Motion's been made, second. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve minutes. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Motion has been made and second, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries. There have been, there have been a motion and second, the paper number nine. Is there all those in favor say aye? Motion carries. Now, we're going to do the bills and payroll. Number six. Did you get the reports? So we just can't put it in a day one? Have you already deal with it? Well. Well, Captain?
He's still there, I don't think. Need time.
Yeah.
So is. So temp still there too? We're still connected. And if you need him to be anymore.
I wanna say I have some questions. I, I did ask Carlos on the, on the drills he's gonna redo his bill. Carlos uh, Carlos um, kind of he is gonna redo his bills. Cause he had only twenty five dollars an hour. Per person. And they didn't pay some square foot. So, so he's gonna take care of that. Correct that bill. So, very full amount. If we get that correct, we'll, we'll pay those. So we're gonna submit those to Pino. Carlos Sotero has some bills I can, and I don't know if you mentioned for this. Uh, Carlos Sotero, the offer. He has something that was outstanding. Uh. Were they emailed to us?
Um, yeah, they, I, we, we did send them to you by email. I could send them again.
Yeah. But uh. Yeah, she did, she, she did get them, but hopefully there's, this that's when you get them approved. Favorite.
Oh, okay.
Um, what's the name of the company?
Sotero Sapphire Merle.
Little Sapphire Merle?
Yes, sir.
Alright. How's everybody on mask for the, for bridges? Because we're, we're starting to get this type of mask. So that way on Monday I can get, our department to give you all a mask to resupply. So, how many workers do you have? Uh, yeah, seven? Seven? Uh, three seven. Four, uh, three coming here. Four, three seven. One? Uh, does everybody have them? No, no, but, but, but these, I mean, you just. But still go ahead and get them, whether you want to use them fine or not, but without supply. Four. If you think so, there, there's three of you. Who? Well, on Monday we'll deliver it and probably some candy sanitizer. Uh, so those are costs are, are starting to come in. That way, you may wanna have a part of kitchen order next week. Have a meeting uh, for the end of the week. If you see any more cases, you may wanna require it when you have a mask. They're recommending that, but, but it's so hard for it to make you find them. So I wanted to see, I'm trying to find. Something to give out to the. Well firstly, you got, you got a lot of pretty workers that are talking to people going out, they need their mask. The bar department, your law department, they need the N ninety five mask. And we reached out to several different places. So you're gonna see some invoices there where Giacca's been finding them. And the hand sanitizer, so you're gonna have those pills in there uh, for that. I don't know. If you're Sotero, it's not a thing anymore.
Alright, I'll drop off. I was just more hanging out, just in case you needed me. Yeah, same here. And then Judge, I re emailed some of the invoices and I'll email the in ones as well if you want.
Okay.
More hanging out, just in case you needed me.
Alright.
Same here.
Thank you.
And then Judge, I re emailed.
Please be safe. Please be safe. And I'm gonna sign off as well. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna sign off as well. Thank you, everybody.
Motion to approve with the opening of the court. Motion to bid deals.
Motion to approve.
A second. Carlos, if there is a I. Motion carries. Payroll, there are motions, payroll. For several, again. Carlos, if there is a I. Motion carries. You have motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn. There are a second? There's a second. Carlos, if there is a I. Motion carries. Did anything adjourn?